Twenty twenty-two and the time is now seven oh three P M. Roll call, police, city guard.
For the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Excuse.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Excused.
Councilmember Wally.
Captain.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, I'm moving too fast trying to get into it. Let's have pledges with allegiance, please, all stand. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for bearing with me. All right, let's get right off into approval of the agenda. The added item. So move, Mr. Chair. Your support. Move are properly supported in discussion. Here in Dunham, favor sign if I can see an eye.
Aye.
You nays? I just have a motion carries. All right, we're right, moving right along. Aaron Cooper. How are you, Director? Come on up. President Miller. Come on up, come on up. Hello, always put you on the, put you on the spot, Mr. President. How you doing today?
I ain't seen a bad day in my life. Good day to the mayor, good day to the council.
Good evening, sir.
Excuse me, sir. Good day to everybody. Uh, my name is Will Miller. I am a commissioner and current board chair for the Inksster Housing Commission. Um, today we're going to be doing a quick presentation, a bit of overview and introduction to the developer that's going to be helping us with, uh, the Lemoine property. Um, the Richmond Group, uh, has been the winning bidder and have been working with us, um, for a little bit now as we start moving through the process. Um, today we have brought with us, um, somebody who's representing Richmond Group, Ms. Dana Christian. She's got loads of experience, been around the metropolitan Detroit area for years and years. She's going to be walking you guys through a little bit of information for the director and myself. All right, so if no, you need for me real quick, I'd like to go ahead and bring up Ms. Dana Christian.
Thank you, thank you, and good evening, um, council members and Mayor Wimberly.
Good evening.
So some of us have met. So good to see you guys again. Now let's make sure I can do this right. So we are the Richmond Group. And I'm missing a few people today. Um, normally it would be myself and, um, two others, Mr. Andre Blakely and Glenn Hudson. Uh, Mr. Blakely extends his apologies because he had a back injury as of yesterday. You know, that lawn work, right? And, um, Glenn Hudson as well, who, who are joining us. But it's important to know that, that we were selected, TRG was selected as the developer for Lemoine Gardens one and two. And so we're working hard to get our repositioning plans in place. And we wanted to come and introduce ourselves and just say, we're here in the community, we're dedicated to this project and we want to get started talking to you guys, talking to the community and understanding what we can do to get Lemoine Gardens, um, into a better condition for the residents. And so that's where we're starting. So TRG, a little bit about us, um, the business is the mission and the mission is the business. And that's important because sometimes you find developers that aren't necessarily mission driven. But the Richmond Group, we are dedicated to the work that we do. Uh, we do it in other cities. I myself am from the Detroit area. I've been doing work in this area for about twenty-five years and have recently done some projects similar to this in the area that, that, um, hopefully you guys will want to hear more about when we have more time. But we, um, we have a rich history of doing these type of repositioning projects in the city. I've given you guys quite a bit of information in the presentation. We won't go through every slide, but I always want to make sure that you have it all in case you ever want to go back and say, hey, let me go back and reference some of this information. So if I skip anything, say, hey Dana, go back and, and we can talk about it. So the Richmond Group, just a little bit about, about us, we're the seventh largest owner of multifamily rental in the United States. Um, the Richmond group of companies are out of Connecticut. Um, but we have, um, TRG, which is a division of the Richmond, um, group is out of, uh, Chicago. But again, when Richmond Group comes into a city, we make sure that we participate with all the local, um, leaders and all of the, the expertise that's here. And so, um, I'm one of those people. I came on board specifically with TRG to work on Lemoine one and two. And so we, we're getting started. So just a little bit about the gentleman on the end there is the one who hurt his back and will be with us next time, um, Andre Blakely. Um, and he has a wealth of experience in, um, development as well. So I'm going to go through a little bit more. So let's just talk about some of, um, some of the others that'll be participating. So myself, Dana Christian, um, Grace Washington is another one of our individuals. Uh, here we go to Grace. Grace is on our team specifically to work on workforce development. Um, we come into a city, as we said, we come into a city and want to work with the leadership and the wealth of knowledge that's here. And so Grace is on our team and soon as we get started, Grace is going to spend some time trying to figure out how we can bring jobs and make sure that we're bringing more investment to the, to the project. So you'll see Grace. Um, and then I mentioned Mr. Glenn Hudson, who is all over the country. He actually did, um, um, a presentation and a training for, um, our board of commissioners. Hi to everyone there. So that we can make sure that everyone understands development. We don't want to come into a city and work on a project and no one understands it and, and then we're asking you to approve things. We want to make sure that you guys understand, everyone understands that we're always available, um, to get through. So Glenn, Glenn started out with the training, um, that we did and he'll be on our team going forward as well to make sure that, you know, you guys say, hey, stop, wait a minute, this isn't making sense to us. Glenn is a national consultant and he'll work with us on some of the work that we do. Um, so let's go to, and I can't see that without my glasses. However, here's our approach. We come into the community and we get started first by being inclusive, stakeholder engagement. And just so you know, we've done a few things. Um, Councilman Williams participated in some of our, our resident meetings as well. Uh, we started with an introductory meeting to the residents just like we're coming to you guys. We also met with Mayor Wimberly. Um, and so we want to make sure that we come in and we let you know we're here and we, we want to work inclusively. And we want to understand what you see. It needs to be done at the, at your, at the properties as we go forward. And then we also try to bring in neighborhood resources because we know that development and physical development all in and of itself isn't the only way that you develop communities. And so we make sure that when we come, we try to bring other resources or we come in and try to gain other resources for the site as we work on this. Cause these projects can be quite lengthy, um, particularly when you're doing such a large number of units, over two hundred units. And so as it takes two to three, four or five years, we want to make sure that we're also bringing other resources to help. So we kind of work on a neighborhood engagement strategy. And then after that, we want to find out and bring all the experts and say, hey, where's the boundary line here? Where's the infrastructure happening? Where's the next asset? Where's the community centers? Where, where, where will the children play basketball? Those are, that's the kind of due diligence that we want to do. So we've started doing some of that already. And, um, let's go, okay. And so we have gotten as far as starting to meet with the local engagement and then meeting with you guys about the, um, the city priorities. I did notice on my way in that there's a lot of road work going on. We want to know where that is so that we can complement whatever work is being done. So that when we come in and do a development, it's right in line with where you guys are putting your investment. That's the right way to use our investment dollars. And then we go and start to talk to HUD about how we can finance this deal. And we all know how that goes. That means a lot of, a lot of numbers, a lot of crunching, a lot of, um, accountants and a lot of data. And so we'll be coming to you guys to talk about a lot of that. Um, we wanted you to know that we've done some early estimates and some early, if, research on each of the sites, um, Lemoine one and Lemoine two. So I, I don't have to tell you guys where it is, but you do see how the proximity to some of the other, um, assets of the community will help us to repopulate Lemoine Gardens in a way that is beneficial to the whole entire city. So we think that it's great that it's not far from the airport. We think it's even better that the Kroger distribution is nearby. And therefore Motor Company is not, is not far. So those are things we want to build on when we try to market to bring new residents and maintain the residents that we have in this community. So I'll skip through a lot of this. We just want to give you some idea of distance to these places. And these things kind of help when we do our full market study, which we will be doing soon. Um, but we've just started already with our site, um, our survey. Um, interesting, I didn't know this. This is a story about the Eloise Hospital, Eloise Cemetery. Some of you guys are smiling, so you probably know more than I do about this, but there's a movie or something coming out. And so when these things happen, those are good, good avenues for us to say, hey, come, come look at what we're doing because here's where the Eloise Cemetery was. But here's also what's going on in Lemoine. And we want you guys to think about coming and living in Lemoine. Um, construction, we are looking at development team members now. Uh, we already have an architect in place, um, Pappas and Associates. Um, and then we also, TRG brings a lot of other, um, in-house resources. So we've always partnered with local, um, architects, local contractors. So we are looking for a local general contractor to work with us. We've been meeting with a few. Um, and so we, we always make sure that it's particularly the construction side. Want to make sure that jobs come and that construction jobs on that site are available to, to those that are qualified. So we try to start that early on, which is what Grace Washington works on. And I know I'm going over my time a bit, so let me move up a little faster. So I did mention that we do, we do a lot with the residents. We do a lot of resident engagement. We've started a survey that the residents have already filled out to let us know, hey, where do you go to the grocery store? What school do your children go to? Uh, what do you like about living in Inksster? What don't you like about? And what about your site? You know, what, how do you like the parking lot? Those are the things that we've already started asking the, the residents, um, start our resident engagement. So, um, let me go a little further. We talked a little bit about, um, our initial, you don't need our, so here are some of the projects that, uh, TRG has worked on or is working on. TRG is over, um, several states right now, working on projects. But this one is particularly, um, the Lennox at Bloomingdale Apartments. And this one is kind of similar to some of the projects that we're working on now. Um, TRG has a really nice project in, um, in St. Croix. So, but just to give you an idea of some of the, some of the projects, the way they look, some of the amenities, some of the things. Not saying that this is exactly what TRG will bring to, to, um, Lemoine Gardens, but these are some of the things, these are the some of the things that we like to see happen. Whoever's saying, why not? Yes, these are some things that we try, we want our projects to be indistinguishable from affordable housing, market rate housing and luxury housing. So we try to bring in all the amenities that we can. And we plan that in, in advance so that we can make sure that we don't have any indistinguishable projects between this is the lower income and this is the higher income. So this is just a before picture of the project in St. Croix. And so just wanted to give you an idea. Can't really see all that, but again, you guys can go back and look at it. And then this is what the planning is now for the next project. So I just want to flip through a few of these and give you an idea of some of the things that we've worked on. Um, some of the amenities, um, as you can see, we have onsite health services, walking trails, seating areas, gathering spaces, outdoor seating, um, community gardens, yoga exercise areas. Uh, we try to bring in medical, dental, food, hospitality services. We try to do a lot of that. And then, um, even pocket parks and art display. You know, it's something that is, that is fitting for this community. Um, some things won't fit. If it fits in St. Croix, doesn't mean it'll fit here. But we want to know what fits for this community so that it, it fits the fabric of the, the community that's already here. Um, and just more pictures, so you guys can flip through these as you go, but just more projects that, um, TRG has done. So I'll open up for questions. Is that what I'm doing next? Is that appropriate?
Question, council? Yes, go ahead.
I would just ask, um, once a phase in Inksster is completed, that they use a before and after example in their package for whatever the, the communities they go to. So we have some bragging rights as well.
Oh, for sure. Absolutely. That's an easy one.
I'd like to ask you, um, have you, um, I know you was interviewing all of the people in Lemoine Garden one and two. Have they, uh, have you come to a conclusion exactly what they want over there?
No, we're still trying to get all the surveys back and we're still having resident meetings. But one thing that we like to do is have what we call meet me at the coffee table meetings. So that those that aren't going to communicate with us as well on the surveys, they'll come to a meeting and they'll say, hey Dana, I did not like when you said this. And we'll get a chance to talk about it and, and get, get to some resolution. So we have surveys coming back. We've not gotten all of them back. We're going to survey people as new people move in. We're always going to be asking. But no, we haven't gotten to any real analysis of the date yet because we're still trying to get the surveys back. Feel free to help us though, council. Help us get some of them back.
People gonna help you too.
Yes, I believe you. I believe you. And that's important.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Any others? As it relates to just the transition of the residents, so from the old to the new, how does that look?
Good question. So one of the things that we have to do, cause typically if we're doing a renovation, it's usually a substantial renovation or a demolition, which is what we actually have been leaning toward for, for Lemoine at this point. We try to keep the residents within the area. So if they have to relocate, we try to move them over to some vacant units on the site. And they live over there while we demolish and rehab these. And then we move them back and then we work on those. And so we call it, um, hotel style, where you move over to some units just temporarily while we work on the others. And that's important because we never want to depopulate the city. We want people to stay here. We don't want them to go someplace else and not want to come back. But everybody has the absolute right under RAD, HUD's RAD program, which is one of the financing tools that we're considering. The absolute right to return should they choose to. And, um, as long as they, they don't have to be pre-screened, but they will be qualified. And, uh, we like to make sure we, we have a place for everybody to come back with the exception of those that may not fit into the market where we, we would then look to vouchers or some other mechanism for them. But yes, we, we absolutely try to make sure that we don't send people away far when we relocate. And we try to make it as, as short as possible. And so there's enough vacancy from where we've analyzed now that we shouldn't have to move anybody offsite unless they decide they don't want to come back.
So as it relates to the, the current product that's there, are you guys looking at doing any remodels to those while people are kind of waiting in between? Cause we know that the process could be kind of long.
Well, I mean, the housing, the housing authority will still maintain it as, as they have to. Um, but we don't actually do anything in the interim until we actually can start and get our financing in place. So no, we won't do any interim, um, build. But we, we definitely will make sure that in the meantime, the people that are there are, are being taken care of. It's just that's the housing authority's role to continue to do that. Um, we have to get our financing in place and then we start. We take over and at that point, we will get the unit ready before we move anyone over there. So if the unit isn't in place and we want to use it as our hotel relocation unit, then we have to get that unit ready.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Question, I'm, I'm just trying to remember and I know it's been a lot. When, um, the project Bishop Haddon was trying to do at one point in time, was this the same group or is this a different group?
Different group.
Different group, okay, mixed in the background. It's okay. Thank you.
Now you did mention as it relates to making sure that the product is, you know, it looks great. You know, we definitely, of course, don't want to distinguish between the two. I think that's something that the community is really leaning towards overall. Um, with the RAD program, is it, are we able to say like, for instance, um, you're not affiliated with HUD, but you can lease a, a place in the new property?
So, so the people that are there, those people have a right to return to the new units. And then there will be some additional units because we are, we have vacancies now that can be leased to other people, others that want to come in and apply.
So you don't necessarily have to go through like the housing program? You could be just a person?
So it, it will still, it, it will still be some, um, partnership with the housing authority. So the, the, the housing authority will be still involved in it, yes. Uh, but it will be privately managed, um, and the housing authority will still have some role.
Interesting, how does that look?
Partnership, so we've done it. I can give you an example of what we're doing in, um, in Indiana. Um, so when we came into the Indiana area, the housing authority is the property manager for the new development under the new ownership. So they just took the same team and, and moved them over to manage. Um, of course, they have to get up to speed on tax credit and some of the other management tools. Um, but yeah, we've, we've been doing that there. And that's, that's according to capacity. Um, and that's according to development agreements. Um, but yeah, it's happened, it can happen in various different ways depending on how you negotiate, negotiate the terms. And so, yeah, in, um, in other cities, even here, we've had it where there's a co-partnership. There's an asset manager and a property manager. So then the two, um, companies come together to actually manage it. So, um, yeah, it, it can be done in a variety of ways.
Okay, I'm pretty sure I have more questions, but I want to monopolize the time. Mayor?
Um, she's saying this is the RAD program? Wasn't that turned down by, um, the housing commission a while ago or no?
No, ma'am, I don't know.
Cause I thought that came up once before and the commission didn't go for it.
Um, maybe that was. Come to, one of you guys come to the, come to the, that way everyone can hear.
So everyone knows rental assistance demonstration is what RAD is and, and you can apply even if you decided not to do it before.
Yeah, well, I'm sure you can if you're doing it. But I'm just saying, I remember something coming up about that prior to you being here, of course.
Yeah, first, yeah. This is part of that, I think, right? Go ahead, explain.
Yeah, prior to, um, Director Cooper coming on, when, um, the previous director, um, Director Bolinger was here, um, they were pushing forward with real similar plans with redevelopment. Um, we first, when I first came on the board, actually my first meeting was for the, the rental assistance, the, our, the RAD, um, development. Um, at that meeting, we voted it down due to lack of information. And, um, for me coming on, I wasn't going to vote for something like that. That was such a pivotal move in a, in a different direction for the housing commission, with me being my first day. So we voted no out of expediency and, and to get more information. As we've gone through it, trained, brought new directors on, we've decided that it is the best way for us to move the property forward and still keep our people safe. So that's what we decided.
I was just making sure that this was something, cause I've heard it before.
You did, you right.
Didn't remember us doing it. Okay, I just have one other question for the young lady. How are you dealing with the, um, malaise that happens in housing?
With the, I'm sorry.
The malaise, I mean, there's this thing where you come in, you say, I'm going to do wonderful things for you. And everybody goes, yeah, we've been here before. So how are you doing? How is that impacting your efforts?
Actually, it impacts it not just here, everywhere we go. Um, usually the reason that we are in a city, um, working on a property, property is because it's, it's falling into some disrepair. Um, because there have been some malaise, as you've said. And, and there's a need to reposition it so that it can become a quality place to live again. And, and the way we handle that is through transparency and making sure that we're, we're reaching out to residents and we're reaching out to the community around the area too. Not just the residents, but it impacts the whole neighborhood. And so that's why community engagement is so important. Because if you don't do that, everyone says, oh yeah, we just heard about it. Or yeah, that, that's not going to work. We've done it in other areas and it really truly is a way to revitalize an area that, that may have been missing a lot of what it should have had over some years. And that's typically everywhere that we go when you come in with a program like this.
Okay, but what is most essential in these efforts is to get a buy-in from those people actually impacted by it?
Correct.
How are you going about facilitating that?
So, so starting here, coming in, talking to you guys, um, making sure that we're meeting with the residents regularly. And those meetings aren't always going to be nice. Oftentimes they're going to be difficult meetings. Um, but we're going to also be honest and truthful and say, here's what we can do, here's what we can't. And here's where we can, we can take what you, what you suggested and we can tell you what we think about it. And we can try to make sure that it happens. But if it can't, we're going to tell you why we can't do it. And so I think if you, if you stick with transparency and inclusiveness and make sure that everyone's at the table, who needs to be at the table, and we don't overpromise something that we can't promise, I think that's when you start to say, okay, I want to have a better quality unit to live in. And this is, this is how it's going to have to happen. And, and let's, let's see what we can do to work together. Because what happens is if you don't, it starts to go further into decline and further into decline. So, so we, we will talk with you guys regularly. We'll talk with the residents regularly. Like we said, meet me at the coffee table is where we just open up the doors and say, hey, we're here, what do you want to tell us about? And, and residents will tell us stuff that we don't have any idea about.
So when did this all initiate? When did this all start?
So we started meeting with the residents in May, but we were awarded, um, as the developer, uh, some, maybe two years back? It's been, it's been a little while.
So this has been in the process for two years?
Well, I think, yeah, yeah, it's, it's been a little while. But we are, we're, we're now, now that we've gotten to start to talk to the residents, we're going to do that monthly, um, and make sure that we, we're, we're here all the time. And then I'm here specifically day to day operating this, this program.
And that to be difficult, well, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the, the transparency, the things you're talking about, I mean, this is the first I've heard of this happening. So I guess, you know, and it's been in, in, in whatever for two years. Do we get a report from, uh, housing?
Yes, they came and actually did announce your report and update. It was very thorough.
It was, it was in that?
Yeah, well, I mean, not to the detail that Ms. Christian is talking about, but about repositioning, uh, Councilman Wally. So talking about just our strategic planning and what we're looking to do over the next three to five years. Um, repositioning and redevelopment is a big thing for us. Like, uh, Ms. Christian said, because we struggle, like most housing authorities, in maintaining the assets that we have. Um, so, and I, I'm just, I'm going to correct, uh, Ms. Christian. It was, I almost believe it was two years. There may have been conversations started about this process and redevelopment for two years. But we just actually ink pen to paper, if you will, with the TRG just in the past year. Uh, so that is a, it's a significant process. Uh, and then once that happens, then that's when the community engagement is started. So this meeting here, the meeting with Mayor Wimberly So, this meeting here, meeting with Mayor Wimbley and the meeting with the residents, all have been boom, boom, boom. Like, this is really the start, this is really the start of everything. So, we wanted to make sure we included city council and the community in the beginning. The pre-talks were just talks about internally, strategy, which way we wanted to go, solicit for the, uh, for the actual developers. All of those steps took place prior to getting here, but we just really solidified, kinda pinned the paper and agreement so we can start talking. We couldn't talk to anybody until we determined.
And that would be made? That would be made?
Yeah, roughly before that.
Ah, okay.
This year.
All right, thank you.
And the trainings, there's been some trainings as well, um, to make sure that everybody knew what they were getting into.
And thi- and this is a significant, I, I'll say this, uh, for the council. Redevelopment, especially redevelopment with the layer of HUD redevelopment is a moving target. So, we can talk to you today about what we wanna do. If we don't get the financing, we could be talking to you over the next two, three years about what we wanna do. It's not, this is what we're gonna do, this is when we're gonna do it. We have to, we have to come up with the financing, which means we have to apply for the money.
So, that has not occurred? So, this is still a, a wish and a maybe?
I, I would say it's, uh, the engagement part.
I see. Okay. That's it, sir.
Okay. Councilman?
I, I'd just like to make a statement that when he seemed brought out about that we have refused to, to accept RAD. At that particular time, that, that the Housing Authority, we, we had a lot of serious problems over there. And it was, the issue was, do we wanna send money over here for RAD? Or do we wanna fix these people's houses from the living with the stuff that we had there? That's the reason why it was denied, uh, on council. And it continued to be that, because we didn't know where we're gonna get the money to, you know, fix all them houses up that we had to do, um, then turn around and, and, and go with RAD, okay? But what, the, not the situation now, if we have opportunity to cover both of that, was the reason why, you know, I feel that, I'm not, I'm not speaking for them, but I feel that this is the reason why they're moving forward with it.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'll say this, councilman, on behalf of our board, um, I, I just say, current and, and right now in our staff, we're not gonna just not do what we need to do for it. So, we gonna fix and do what we need to do until we can determine and we have a new product. And we use the funds responsibly. You know, we have to understand that, we have to be responsible with our future uses of the funds and our current usage of the funds. And that's the kind of balancing act that we do, but we just don't put away money for ten years from now. We got an obligation to take care of the properties as of today.
All right, thank you so much, thank you so much, Director. And of course, commission for all the hard work you guys are continuing to do. Just continue to move forward. Thank you. Send agenda? Your support? Move the property supported, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Discussion, I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
I, I meant to ask earlier to our irritation, um, just for clarity. So, I see this is an invoice from Allen Brothers and I know we already had kinda sorta made a move, um, well, not made a move, but some things that occurred. And I had saw on one of the invoices, I thought it said it was our final one, but I just would like some clarity on it since we're getting another.
Notice negotiations, there's a lot of stuff on there for negotiations for the fire and police contracts that we're still going through. They'll be before you, uh, hopefully, uh, next council meeting.
Gotcha, oh, you said the police and the fire or?
You have the, the police, I just sent you guys this week, so you guys should be reviewing that, any questions that you may have, sending those forth.
Okay.
The fire, when you guys have been had that one.
Right.
It's a determination on what we was gonna do, um, but we should be wrapping this up.
Basically, once the contract negotiations and everything are ratified, uh, we'll be completely transitioned.
Correct.
From two law firms just to one.
Correct, okay.
Neither of those matters, by the way, have my firm built anything on those matters. Those are being wrapped up by Jim Allen and John David Allen, but you won't see building on our invoice for those two matters.
Okay, I was just concerned that it was two different firms, that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Eyes have emotion carries. New business?
First item nine eight. Discussion to consider authorizing administration to enter into a contract with L. Angstini and Sons Incorporated for Phase Two of the Avondale Road Reconstruction Project, including water main improvements in the amount of one million, eight hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents. Um, in with a fifteen percent contingency of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-four and fifteen cents. Bringing the total construction cost to two million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-two cents.
What's your pleasure?
So, move, Mr. Chair?
Your support?
Support.
Discussion?
Now, now with this, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
With this Phase Two Avondale, that's from what streets? That's gonna be from Eastern to Ince Road or it's just gonna, it's going the other way?
To this body and to the viewing audience, I know what it is here, it's gonna be from Eastern to Ince Road.
So, this, this is, I know you explained it to us before that we're not gonna get the, all the streets done, well, this part of the street paved, but it's gonna be just.
Patched, yes, sir. Patch where we cut in and put the water main in.
So, it just, it's just water mains, that's what we, okay. So, we're looking in the future?
We're looking at this time next year to go into Phase Two road construction.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, anyone else? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have emotion carries.
Item nine B can, is to consider authorizing the administration to enter into a contract with Paymar Enterprises for the North River Park Drive Water Main Improvement Project in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-six cents, plus a fifteen percent contingency of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, for a total of one million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
What's your pleasure?
So, move, Mr. Chair?
Your support?
Support.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have emotion carries.
Item, item nine C. To consider authorizing the administration to enter into a contract with Paymar Enterprises for Section Seventeen Water Main Improvement Project in the amount of one million, ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents, plus a fifteen percent contingency of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents, for a total in construction cost of one million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
What's your pleasure?
So, move, Mr. Chair?
Your support?
Support.
Move the property supported, any discussion?
Just one quick question.
Please, ma'am.
To the chair, um, this is all paid for, right? No?
It would be all paid for with the twenty million dollar bond that we took.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any others? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have emotion carries. Next item, please.
To consider, no, excuse me. Item nine D is to consider authorizing the administration to enter into a contract with All Seasons Underground Construction for the two thousand twenty-two lead service line replacement project in the amount of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, plus a fifteen percent contingency of ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents, for a total of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents in construction cost.
What's your pleasure?
So, move, Mr. Chair?
Your support?
And one thing you need to understand from this, we're paying for this.
We would?
This is coming out of the water fund.
This is for the lead service lines that we have to, that were mandated to do by the state, correct?
That were mandated for us to do by the state, that we did. We did get some funding, I think like a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the feds to go towards this project.
How many do you have left to do?
Uh, let's see, there's sixty-seven, sixty-seven, yes. Well, let me say, the total is roughly nine hundred and fifty services we have to do in the city in the next fourteen years.
And you had to do sixty-seven per year?
We're doing sixty-seven per year, which comes out to like fourteen percent of the total amount.
How did you come up with that number?
Uh, when we first, the first time, we didn't reach the level, but we exceeded the level of seasons. We had a meeting with the state and at that time, it was like, we had to do seven percent. So, we knew they was gonna increase it, so we took it to fourteen percent, came up with the number. On the whole, and, and through the math and calculation, we came up with the number, roughly sixty-seven units.
What's the total cost overall?
Uh, around fourteen million.
And, uh, we know that the state, of course, is doing some infrastructure dollars and I know that they're releasing their package soon.
We hope we get the money.
Okay, cause we are shovel-ready.
Yes, we shovel-ready on both projects that we submitted.
Of course.
The mayor had me talk to the legislative body up in Lansing, together with him and I, we submitted forty-two million dollars on behalf of the city of Ince.
For infrastructure, that should cover us. Yep.
You mean, you mean you asked for forty-two million dollars? Oh, okay, you say you submitted, I said, where'd we get that from?
Yeah, so, basically, uh, you know, they said we had to be shovel-ready, so with all of the projects, just said exactly what it is, the numbers and submitting that to them.
Oh, yeah, hey, councilman, uh, Chisholm was involved in that.
Of course, Stephen does everything.
Rep. Jones, for sure.
Representative Jones, and what's the young lady name?
Um, when you say.
The other representative.
Um.
Barbara, the other state rep.
State rep? Are you talking about our senator? Oh, Betty Jean Alves Zander? Honorable Senator Betty Jean.
They collaborate together.
Correct, yeah, for sure.
But as the mayor said, in this city, just a brief, you have to be shovel-ready. So, when he calls me, first thing he asks me, is it shovel-ready? Yes, I put the time in, I put the years in, I got the numbers and we sent it on. And we've been pretty successful in getting money. We've been, you know, I've been pretty happy with the department and the efforts we have, cause a lot of our projects have been funded.
Well, let's hope this one is too.
Me too.
Definitely need, definitely need this one known, for sure. Any other questions?
This is going, this, Mr. Chair? This is going to increase the value of our drinking water, the lead service.
I'm not gonna say that, sir. I'm not gonna say that.
Cause you know, I mean, you know that.
I mean, we removing the lead service that years ago was acceptable in the market, now it's not acceptable. So, I'm not gonna say something like that.
I mean, because you know the hype on what's going on with the, with the lead situation in our community. I mean, the people really wanna know, you know, how is this going to really affect, you know, the quality of drinking water in the community? Because this has an effect on the quality of life in our city.
And if you read my CCR report that I'm required to put out every year, that the mayor signs off on the letter saying that our water is good, our water is good. It's just we're correct, it's just like, many years ago, blacktop was accepted as a road. Now, everybody wanna do concrete, so things evolve and they change. Many years ago, lead was accepted, now it's not accepted. So, we're just, we're just continuing to evolve and correct problems that are no longer accepted.
So.
If you read my CCR report, I spell it out, that the water is fine. And he wouldn't sign the letter if it wasn't.
And I, I, I understand what you're saying. There is a concern and it's a serious concern about the quality of the water within our community. Now, if this, if this is, is, is posted on the city's website, correct? Okay. So, that's all.
Yeah, it's not only posted on the city we- website, it went out in all the water bills as well, as it relates to, to the CCR report. That's something that we have to do every year.
Yeah, I mean, I want that to be, we used to have it in a little envelope, you know, I mean, they used to deliver it, self-deliver it, you know.
Yeah, it went out to all the residents?
Yeah, so, I mean, but there is a concern, even with that report. Now, I'm just being, you know, courteous about the report, but there's still, you know, a, a concern about even believing in the report of our water. So, what I'm saying is that we wanna make sure that we're doing things to even increase that, you know, I wanna say perception or sight of, you know, good drinking water.
Law, Shaw, let me put your mind at ease and America can attest to this. Me and the mayor were on the call, we were evil, but we didn't, but we failed the action level both times and they complimented the city of Ince for being proactive. So, we're doing what we're supposed to do and he can attest to that.
That's correct. That is correct, yeah. Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we just make sure we're clear for the record that the water in the city is fine. This is about, this is about lead service lines that are, you know, fifty years old when houses were built, with lead service lines. Now, the state is saying that we have to change them out.
Yeah, for sure, and I agree with that.
Okay.
But just what, you know, what I'm hearing, you know, I mean, I understand the information is out there. A lot of times, people don't pay no attention to the information, you know, that we get. But we are doing the things that we're supposed to do.
Correct.
To make sure that the quality of life in the city of Ince is, is good.
Correct, yes, sir. Anything else in this matter? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Eyes have emotion carries, item E, please.
Um, item E is consideration to authorize the police department to commence with their national night out on August second.
So, move, Mr. Chair?
Your support? Move the property supported, but the request is to close the roads at, uh, Trow Bridge and Bay.
It's, uh, Bayhand from Keene to Trow Bridge. And Trow Bridge from, from Bayhand to just west of City Hall, from ten AM, um, ten AM to twelve AM on August second for national night out.
All right. Been moved improperly supported, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
When they say ten AM to twelve PM.
Ten in the morning to twelve in the evening.
It should be to, to, I mean, PM, cause when it hits twelve, it's AM. So, just clarity.
Yes, ma'am, so we know midnight. All right, gotcha, clarification, all right. This brings us to public participation, we do have a few individuals from the community who would like to address this body. We'll ask that when you come forth that you state your name for the record and, um, you're allowed three minutes to speak to the, uh, the body and the community. Arthur Warren? There you are, ma'am.
Arthur Warren, um, my address is two eighty-nine sixty-seven Eaton Street in the city of Westland. I'm a precinct delegate of the precinct twenty-eight. Uh, what I've noticed in my travels through our precinct is that some of your rubbish cans are showing up in the city of Westland.
Interesting.
Okay, I'm gonna give, uh, you the address of where your rubbish cans are at. I don't know whether you loaned them out, borrowed them, or they've been misplaced, but they're there.
You see that man sitting right, right behind you?
Okay, well, the address of where they are is on twenty-nine, twenty-nine oh ninety-seven Richard Street, close to Middle Belt. So, uh, if, if they haven't been loaned out or misplaced, I would, we would like for you to come and pick them up.
Richard Street?
Richard Street.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you very much. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Speaking on garbage cans, can we ask, if you notice a house that has like seven? How do we, you know, cause you know they didn't get seven?
They taking them from other places.
Do we report that to Jerome too?
You can report that to Mr. Bivens and Mr. Bivens, they give with code enforcement and how that rectify.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Pastor Overman?
Hey, good evening, hello, everyone, Pastor Jane Overman, two six seven seven five Stanford Street in Ince. Just wanna, um, say the summer, summer fest was phenomenal, had a great time. And I came up here with two things, but speaking about the garbage cans, Arthur made me, uh, think about that because Mother's Pantry has had to repurchase them because people take them all the time from us and we have to pay to get new ones. But I came to say, remember to vote, August second, support our community, get out to vote. And one other thing that I totally forgot, so it may come to me and I'll come back with it, but other than that, remember to vote August second, thank you.
All right, Pastor. Octavia Smith?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City of Ince residents. So good to see everybody. Um, just wanted to just say a few things, first of all, for Ince Task Force, we are asking that possibly, if we can get a permission to set a banner from the light pole, once we talk to DTE and to the, um, inside of our lot where we have the farmer's market, so that people can see the banner as they roll, ride past. So, it's just a banner, and we just wanna put it up high so that people can see it. So, we want to come to the city council to get permission to do that. Um, and the market is open every Wednesday from four to seven until October the fifth, twenty twenty-two. So, we would love to see you guys stop by and support Ince Task Force Farmer's Market. From the Ince Chamber of Commerce, um, we definitely wanna thank every councilperson, mayor, city official who had an opportunity to attend. Um, we enjoyed you guys, we had a good time and we look forward to working with you guys again in the future, um, and also collaborating with the city. I do wanna say, like Pastor Jane said, that the summer fest was beautiful, it was awesome. I enjoy myself, I had a lot of family members that I invited from out of state and things and they came and they enjoyed themselves as well. So, great job. And finally, just to say, to remind everybody that with Western Wayne Family Health Center, there is free zumba on Tuesdays and Thursdays from six to seven and there is free yoga on Mondays from six to seven. And that is at twenty-seven hundred Hamlin Boulevard in Ince, Michigan, right behind the post office. So, if you wanna get your exercise in, if you need some medical help, you know, stop by Western Wayne and, um, get yourself checked out and support a local FQHC in the city, Freddie Callahan Health Center. Are there any questions before I leave off? I always get a couple of questions.
Are you all giving this, is the Western Wayne giving the second booster shot?
Is for those people who like them?
Yes, they are. The booster shots are generally on Fridays and Saturday. And persons would have to call so that they can get on the schedule because a lot of people are asking. And that phone number is three one three five six one five one zero zero. And just follow the prompts and they will give you all the prompts and they would, it would ask you what you would like to do, booster, medical, whatever.
And are they, do they have all three, like the Pfizer, the Moderna?
Yes, they have had all three, yes, ma'am.
Right.
Any other questions from anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, in regards to the banner that she spoke of and speaking about, or talking about speaking to the utility company, I know we don't necessarily own those poles and they're gonna be attached, I guess, in their parking lot, which is private property. Um, would we have to actually vote on that? Would that just be something that would just fall under the ordinance and they could be referred to?
Yes, under the ordinance, and that was my, that was gonna be my question too, um, Ms. Smith, have you guys started with the building department? That's where that, that's where it would start from.
Actually, when we were in Dearborn, we seen them went one across there, so we like, and we've had a banner for a while that sits on the ground that people cannot see. So we just wanted to basically raise it, no, we have not, um, contacted ordinance, cause I'm, you know, we're not sure if we needed to go through ordinance. Cause it's a banner that will be on the property, so it's not like it's gonna be in the street or anything like that. It's gonna, but it does go across the sidewalk, but it will be very high up. So that's why we had to, wanted to come to you guys to make sure that it was okay for us to do that. Or if we need to, you know, go through ordinance or whatever.
Yeah, well, not necessarily ordinance, it's just that we have, you know, a process as it relates to requests for that. Because it is assigned ordinance in the city of Ince that code enforcement actually enforces.
Right.
I'll have Mr. Don give you a call, he's the chief building official. And we'll do everything that we can to help you get it done.
Okay.
We want you to be successful.
We wanna, we wanna make sure we have it up there, if we can get it up there to let people know that we are there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right. City clerk?
Well, I'd like to piggyback on Pastor Overman. Uh, we do have an election on August second. Absentee ballots are still available for those who are not necessarily on our permanent AV, uh, AV voting, um.
She can't, they can't hear you, just gotta speak up a little bit. We need to get you one over here, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we're, I'm just reminding you that we do have an election on August second. Absentee ballots are still available. You can just come to our office and request one. Um, we're still open for registered, registering voters. And, um, we will be doing that through August second. And the parks office will be open Saturday, July thirtieth for, um, to service our residents who are not available to come through to our normal working hours. So we'll be open, open July thirtieth from eight to four thirty for your convenience. And lastly, I'd like to just express my, uh, gratitude. I'm in a spirit of gratitude for everyone's, um, outpour of support and love during the loss of my mother. Thank you.
You're welcome. City treasurer? Move right into Mayor Council's communication, one around Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, first of all, um, I would like to know how the deficit elimination plan is coming. I know we talked about that during the, uh, during the, uh, and if we're having any input in that?
Oh, yeah, for sure, go ahead.
We, we still have the current one in place, so, um, you know, that one is updated and sent to the state.
Can we get a copy of that, council? So we can see what we're eliminating?
Yeah, for sure, I think it's the same one, but recent, A seven.
Yeah, do that, because a lot of times-
It's not for this one that's coming up, as we just realized, it's not, this is the one that we're currently under. Cause we're gonna have to do, probably be doing another one, must the, um, order just-
The, the, the one we're doing now to ameliorate what the last budget did, okay?
So make sure we send that.
All right, and the second thing is, um, how are we coming with getting the report from the library requested?
What is that?
The library, we requested them to come before us and let us know what's going on. And, uh, I believe Ruthie said she sent Tim or whatever.
I'll follow up with the presidency.
Yeah, cause they were some-
See what it is that he got going on over there.
Residents asking about certain things that are happening because they said there was no director, there was this, that, and we asked for a report, so I just wanted to know-
Yeah, I think they can come into it up there, I know that they're a total, separate body and a totally different authority, and we can't necessarily tell them to come.
Yeah, but they're still paying for it by taxpayers' money.
Yeah, but they have-
And the taxpayers wanna know.
Yeah, but they do have, they do have meetings and posted meetings and public meetings at the library concerning that. At the same time, we will ask them out of courtesy, we can't, we can't summon them.
Yeah, that would be great, that's, that's all we want.
We'll ask them to come.
Thank you, that would be nice.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, second thing is, are you having the, uh, the marijuana ordinance rewritten?
No, we haven't started that process as of yet.
But, uh, I was been speaking to Mr. Gorinflow and he is under the impression he's rewriting the marijuana ordinance, is that not the case?
James Gorinflow is no longer with us, hasn't been with us in, what, three months at least? So I don't know-
At the time, he was rewriting it, or so he said, so is that continuing or no?
No, no, because, okay, so, so basically, um, right now, it's a issue that's gonna come before the council within probably the next, I would say, four weeks, so two meetings from now as it relates to just marijuana establishments. And of course, you've been through the planning process, you've been in the planning commission meetings. So it's a number of marijuana dispensaries that's come before us. However, because of the ordinance and the way that the ordinance was written, it wasn't clear as it relates to how the process, number one, should, should be as it relates to distancing and existing marijuana locations versus wannabe marijuana locations.
Okay, if that is coming back into it, I, we need to have some input on that.
You will.
Because what's happened up to this point is not beneficial to the city of Ince at all. To be inundated by all of these, uh, establishments, so-
It's because it's a gap in the law, so the ordinance should be re, it should be rewritten, however, it's gonna go through the-
Because it doesn't say anything of any definitive nature.
Right, so it should go through the process, which is the planning commission for a public hearing and then, of course, to the council.
But once you, I mean, the last time, we got no input on that at all.
Um, I, I, yeah, I can't-
We asked for numerous things that never occurred.
Well, I was, you say we, but I know, I was at the meetings too, I was at the meetings too, and we had meetings over meetings.
I asked for things. I sent in information that would like, that should be contained within that ordinance and it never showed up. At the end of it, we never even had a clear copy or a clean copy of that ordinance. Even the person who wrote it can't tell you what's in it, which is bad.
That person's not here, and that was almost a year, year and a half of it.
But I'm saying that this time around, you want input and you want clear cut input. You wanna say, I want this and this is put into it.
Yes, ma'am, but we can't operate in confusion either and understand that we are body, so once the body votes, then you can't just say-
We are operating in confusion right now.
Well, let me say-
Cause nobody know nothing about this ordinance.
Well, ma'am, you're saying that you don't know, you can't say that the entire body don't know we all voted on it.
Okay, go ahead, body, tell me what y'all know about it.
But that's, here, here's the thing, we had to vote on it and we had several meetings.
You have to have the input.
The information.
And since you are admitting yourself that the current one is convoluted and, 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 uh-
Yes, it has been from anyone.
Confused.
Yes.
Then this next one should be concise and we should have that input and it should be specified.
You have to, because it's a special lane use. So you're, you're acting like as if you didn't have any input or if something just happened, it just didn't happen.
I'm not talking about the special lane here, sir.
It is a special lane use, so you have to have it.
I'm not talking about that, sir, I'm talking about the ordinance itself.
Yes.
Okay?
And that's part of the special lane use.
That says what you can and can't do. Now, one of the things that is, uh, specified in the state is that the state does not limit the numbers. But it gives the ability of the cities to limit the number of marijuana places they have in their city.
Okay, well-
It gives them that. And we were, uh, told that rather than to be sued, buffers would be better. Buffers are not better when we're contemplating six different applications at one time in a city that's only six square miles.
Yes, ma'am, but that's, that's, that's your, that's, you're entitled to that, that's why you're sitting here. But the discussion, once it's had and the information put forth, it will be called a vote. And then the vote is what it is.
Yeah, we voted no the last time and that's, we're, we're left with that now, at least I did and three other people.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Or two other people.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, that was my question, it is not being rewritten there?
No, not as of yet, because again, it, and David, you wanna chime in just a little bit on this? Cause I know that we have been talking about this in planning commission, um, at least what, two, three months now?
Well, in a prior conversation, um, years ago, I think when it first started, first of all, just the history of it is that Ince opted into the industry because we had nothing else going. And it was the previous administration who was at the head of Ince dropping in. And when we capped it, when the ordinance was originally written, it was at three. And what, and this is all new, what, what many jurisdictions and municipalities have found is when you have a cap, finite number, the city is more prone to litigation because people who believe they should be entitled to do with their property what they're legally authorized to do, you open a lawsuit. So a discussion was had with regard to creating it by zoning, requiring a certain zoning, which would be a natural cap. Now, Member Wiley is expressing her opinion that she believes we have too many and we have too many in the process. The, the amendment was something that was passed on by the council. It was voted on with, with the buffers to have a natural cap and a hope to eliminate the lawsuits. Um, that's what happened. Um, and with regard to the corrections, the state has been correcting the law, each municipality, you know, they, they improve their law. She's not wrong that there could be some improvement in the ordinance and, you know, when the ordinances are read, everybody has an opportunity to get a public hearing to chime in and give their opinion and vote at the end of the day, yes or no.
There you are. So with that process, it, it has to go through the process. So it's not just me having something rewritten.
I just want some input.
You, you will have it.
I didn't get before, that's what I'm asking for.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's it.
All right.
Oh, wait, one, one more thing, can't let you go that easy.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, shoot.
I can't believe it.
Um, the moratorium.
The moratorium?
Yes, we have a moratorium, yet these things keep going through the system. My estimation, and this is from, um, from, uh, Webster's, moratorium, any authorized delay or stopping of some specified activity. We're not stopping, why?
So the moratorium had a delay in it?
Yeah, one day.
Yeah, you were familiar with it.
One day, now whatever people did on that one day, didn't mean it would go forward in perpetuity, did it?
Well, yeah, I don't believe that, the city clerk hasn't accepted any applications during the moratorium at all.
But I'm just talking about this process is continuing even though we have a moratorium. What's the point in having one if we're gonna keep doing business as usual?
So David, can you please clarify that for us?
Well, I, I wasn't clear and I'm still not clear with regard to your question. I, I was under the impression that prior to the, the council passing the moratorium, there was a gap in period where other folks applied, but I don't think that's what you're referring to.
But that's what, that's what happened. So now, so now what she's saying is we're continuing during the moratorium because we, the council then put on another moratorium. So during this moratorium, should we honor those applicants that put in their applications when the moratorium was off?
Believe we, we'd be subject to legal exposure if we don't.
Correct. And that's that part.
I, I think, I think there's, there's a, um, um, a missing thing here. Because when the moratorium was on, there was a one day lapse in between the old moratorium and the newer. I believe we covered that at the last planning commission meeting, right?
Right, because of the holiday.
Okay, now, the moratorium was on during all of that time. So whatever was in the process then was stopped, right? Or no?
Um, it was nothing in the process, I don't believe. I'm, I can't-
And then in one day, we got six different applications turned in. The clerk said two.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to put the clerk on the spot, however, I know what we're doing.
And maybe this is not the forum to dis, to, to try and meet it out. But somebody needs to tell me how we're working this. Cause if people are still doing business as usual and we have a moratorium on, what's the point?
Yeah, but we haven't accepted any more applications after the moratorium.
It's not the fact of accepting them, they're still going through the process with the moratorium on.
You have to honor those that, that the moratorium was not on during that time.
But the moratorium was on for a year before this.
Right, so we should have have actually voted during the moratorium to extend the moratorium another year, so you had coverage. Cause you have attorneys that's actually, the gentleman, and I'm surprised he's not here because he's threatening to sue because of that action for the most part, because we didn't hear his case at the planning commission meeting.
That's not why, that's because you didn't even bring it to the table. You can vote it up, you can vote it down, but you don't just leave it.
Well, no, he told me exactly what it was, so I've been talking to him directly, trying to get him out of the suit.
Okay, well, I, this isn't going to get me anywhere, it never does, so.
Well, you know, we can have further discussion outside of here, if you want.
That's it.
Open for that. Okay, all right, let's go on and just slide on around, Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sure.
A couple of things, I'm gonna have to reach out to IT again, cause I'm starting to feel like councilman Wiley in my office three six five. It's telling me everything's expired to reactivate the login and it won't let me.
Have you just reached out to them?
I did, and they had updated it. But, and they had fixed it one time, but it's back to it again. And first it was just my email, now it's everything, or Excel and all that, so I just wanted to put that on your radar.
All right, cool.
Cause in, in the event that I inadvertently missed-
I had Tony call you. I had Tony call you, cause I know he said you guys got a relationship, so.
Yeah, Tony, it's anybody, but I'm just letting you know, in the event I inadvertently missed some emails and stuff like that, I'm having to go through an alternative to access.
Okay, I got you.
And for Madam Clerk, she spoke about the AV ballots. I did have a couple of people reach out to me that had mentioned they hadn't received theirs yet. Um, so I just wanted to know what should be the process or what's the latest? Cause I know the mail is kinda janky sometimes, the postal service itself. And what would you recommend if by a certain date they haven't received it, cause it still needs time to get back to you all?
So, ma'am-
Yeah, please.
So, we don't have control over the mail. I have been in meetings with, uh, um, postmaster about prioritizing our ballots. Our state is submit your ballot is August second at eight PM. So if someone is concerned about not having their ballot, they should call us. We have a process to cancel out when we mail to them and reissue them a ballot. And they can actually vote here and leave it.
Okay, I just, I, I thought that was the process, but I just wanted to make sure so I can convey that information. And so the public that's listening live here and watch it in the future, uh, I'm sorry, watch it on the public access channel will know as well. And that way, we don't get pinged with voter suppression or anything like that, cause it was not of our fault.
And if I can add, we are bending over backwards to make sure everybody's able to submit a ballot, who wants to?
All right, um, and just the last thing, you know, is we've been going out to different community events and things of that nature. Uh, Mr. Mayor, just letting the general public know that you are invited to attend planning commission meetings so that you have a voice to voice whatever that we're deciding upon before it gets to city council for a vote. Those meetings are second and fourth Mondays of the month. And they begin at six thirty PM right here in council chambers. And the only reason I say that is because we get inundated with things that have come before the city. And it was like, well, planning commission took this up a month ago when you had an opportunity to speak and nobody came. Like you could literally throw bricks inside the council chambers and hit nobody. So I just wanted to-
You could hit me.
You said I could hit you? So I just wanted to, uh, voice that, so you are, are welcome to attend. Um, we did modify our schedule though, so in the event there's something special that needs to be taken up on that second Monday of the month, we will. But other than that, most normal meetings for planning commissions have been voted on not to take up any matters on that Monday. And we won't have a meeting, but the fourth Monday is written in stone. But just keep that under your hats and please let, um, other concerned residents know that you are marred and welcome to attend. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Weep?
I will speak on that, but, but, yeah, let me speak on that. You know, I, I was in this city when it first started talking about marijuana, marijuana, okay? I watched the- And I watched the previous council that I was here, they approved marijuana in the city, means the public, from the public, okay? But now all of a sudden, now, when they got, when they, when they got their three in, you understand, they wanna cut off now. You see what I'm saying? And then, you know, but you gotta go by the law. You gotta go to law. I didn't tell them to go down there and put a moratorium on, on, on marijuana. They done it. I didn't tell them to lift it. You see what I'm saying? And the people just outsmarted you. That's all, but don't we accept that? They outsmarted this council. When they went out there, when they went out there, they're like, you tried to put a moratorium on, they lifted, they waited just as good till you lifted the moratorium and they went in there and all and put their applications in. So now you talking about getting rid of them? Write your figures out, David, cause that's what's finna happen, okay? If you try, if, you know, you, you, you gotta, you gotta pay attention on what you're doing, okay? You gotta pay attention, okay? And I must say, go back and look at the minutes, who started all of that? Moratorium, took it off, tried to lift it, tried to put it back on, tried to lift it and all this stuff here, okay? So what I'm saying is this, okay? We gotta stop all of this stuff that we're doing that's causing lawsuits. So Inglewood will be broken. And I study here the attorney a lot of times, say, well, we know we don't really wanna do it, you know, it gonna cost you and, and, and. You wouldn't believe we got an attorney that's trying to save us a dollar, okay? He's, he's, he's giving us advice, but we, we, we jump into the, we jump into the fire. We don't mind getting burned up because it ain't our money, it's the city's money. I won't go no further than what I really wanna say, but then, you know, sometimes we gotta look at exactly where we moving. And, and we got to get our minds where we are trying to move this city forward. You know, we take people like bumblebees. You ever, you ever got stung by a bumblebee? You understand, that's what we doing and we need to stop it. We got issues here that we gonna do this, we stuck with them now, so the main thing is you need to be talking about what we gonna do about it. I got on this council, got all these issues, okay? So what we gonna do about it? That's what we need to be talking about, what we gonna do about it? Okay, but we can do away with a lot of this, okay, for all them people that you talking about and doing that, ain't nothing you gonna do to them. Them people, them people had. If you was in the room when they was in here, they had so many big time lawyers in here that day we was in here for, for, for your planning meeting. You don't think they had legal advice out there?
They always do.
They always do, okay? And then you know good and well, this council knows anything get passed by the planning commission, you better have a good reason why you deny. And you know that, you been on council long enough to know.
And I've denied it before too.
Okay? You can't deny nothing that the, 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 the planning commission bring forward here unless you got a proper call. Am I right or wrong, Mr. Attorney?
You have to articulate reasons why you voted against.
That's right, you gotta, you gotta stipulate a reason why you voted. And ain't nothing you can come up with because you created the law.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Councilman, Councilwoman, let's move on.
No, I just wanna clarify one thing. Tell this man who opted in to marijuana? What, what council opted in to marijuana?
Well, you actually had two councils that opted into marijuana, you had.
Well, we, the first one was him.
That's right.
They opted in. We were left with that opt-in.
Well, that was the medical opt-in, you guys opted in on November the fifth for a special meeting that Mayor Nolan did.
This all came about not from that council.
Opted in to the adult use marijuana, that's why we're dealing with everything that we're dealing with now.
Because they had stopped doing the medical, you weren't getting money for medical anymore.
Well, whatever reason was the reason, he just asked me to answer the question, I did.
And it started with that previous administration.
I got you.
So, so can I have a floor back?
Oh, no.
The floor was already yours.
Okay, well, it didn't seem like it, but I wanna say this.
Go ahead.
Okay, a lot of these different things we inherited. You know we did, okay, so we don't need to get in that kind of conversation. We inherit these, somehow we had to try to do something with it. When the, the law is the law, okay? And, and the thing that we're sitting here, a lot of it that I, I feel like we're doing a lot of personal snapping. And we don't need that in this city. If you for Inglewood, every issue that we make at this council should be to benefit the city of Inglewood. Nobody else. I wouldn't allow nobody to come up to me in this city and try to talk me into doing something for them if it ain't benefiting this city. I better stop right there.
All right, Councilman, Councilman Shaw?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just had a couple of things, uh. I have a property over on, uh, River View. It's, uh, two eight, four, 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 River View. It has been a, a nuisance to my, my, my members in that area. I talked to the chief before, we had conversations and he was work, he, you know, he used, used the resources that he had to be able to try to rectify the problem. But it's an ongoing problem. And I, 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 I know you may mention about some demolition dollars is possible that we can use. Because this house is abandoned, it's, it's abused, it's, it's, it's eyesore. And it's using up, um, you know, city dollars and trying to maintain the property, trying to police the property. And, uh, I'm looking that if we can utilize some things, uh, to really get this, this property out of the way and giving the residents some type of peace of mind and safety over in that section.
Okay, I'll follow up with the chair.
Another thing that I had, Mr. Chair, was, uh, I, I already talked to Mr. Bivins about some of the tree cutting that was being done. I wanna thank Darryl Davis and Mr. Bivins and DPS Department for, uh, the job they've done for some issues that I had. And I wanna say thank you, Mr. Bivins, and to the administration also, thank you for that. Uh, and also. Also, I, I wanna say that, you know, the Inglewood Summer Fest was a, a fine, fine night out for, for the weekend. I just wanna thank, um, Ms. Ruth Williams, chairperson of this, uh, Inglewood Summer Fest and yourself, Mr. Mayor, uh, on the Summer Fest committee. You know, it was, it was a fine and fabulous night. And I think we really needed that. Been having so much tension, so much, you know, anxiety. And it was good to see the family of Inglewood out, celebrating, having a good time. You know, we, we, we all got along, so to speak, in that time. I mean, I, I ain't saying that nobody didn't get on by nerves. But we had overall a good time in the city of Inglewood right here. Where some, where some people say it can't be done, so to speak. But we had a fine time. We were partying, you understand? And you know what, they had a saying that was, I, I think, uh, uh, Brother Hardy was saying, you know, what type of town is this? It's In Town. What type of town is this?
In Town.
What type of town is this?
In Town.
This is In Town. And we can get down. And we showed the world, and you know what, Mr. Chair? I can't wait till next year.
Yeah.
Ms. Ruth Williams, I can't wait till next year. I seen Ruth out early Friday setting up on Inglewood Road. See, when you're driving by, you're watching, you can see your folks out, see what they doing. When you're cruising around In Town. So I just want to encourage our community, let's continue on with those positive vibes. Because we can get some things done together. I think Reverend Williams talked about where there's unity, there's love, there's strength. So I just also want to encourage my fellow Inglewoodites. If you see something, say something. That's all I have to say.
I'm just gonna say amen, all right. But, you know, I, I am, when I say just elated, um, when, when you talk about things, it's so many people, um, that was involved in, in the festival and its success, but, um, you know, without Ruthie Williams and, and her leadership, of course, Jerome Bivins and the E P W, Chief Ratliff and, uh, the Police Department and all those collaborations from, uh, Wayne County Sheriff, uh, the State Police and, uh, the auxiliaries. You know, Easter felt safe. You know, I feel safe in Easter every day, I mean, just cause, you know, I love Easter. One of the slogans right now for us is, is enjoy Easter in every aspect of Easter. But with us actually coming out together as a community, you had grandma there, mama there, daddy there, auntie there, cousin there. See, that's what makes the difference because family is the foundation of anything that you're doing. So when you put that forth and you make sure that you're doing it with the right intentions, the vibe is just what it is, it's all love, for sure. So I just wanna thank, you know, you all, of course, as a community, um, for coming out and not only coming out, but you came out, you were looking good in the community. You know, people came from out of town, they were really excited about Inglewood. We had different developers, um, come out that were really excited about that whole entire area being at Inglewood Road, Michigan Avenue that, you know, they're committed now because they actually felt the community and that's the difference. We have to change the mindset of the community. It's just like the church in the steeple. You have a lot of people inside, but it's the people that makes the actual church. It's the same thing with the community. So I love you, I thank you all. I know that Inglewood is definitely on the rise, we're continuing to move forward, no matter what is going on. Of course, you know, we have to have this, you gotta have it, it's okay to have differences. But to be clear on the path and the direction, it's easy, the vision is simple. We have to take care of what we have, making it clean, safe and accessible. Thank you. Call for German, so move, support. Own favorite signified by sin eye?
Aye.
Any names to stay? All right. Eight thirty, look at that, eight thirty, I think that we should set a standard for eight thirty. The meeting's gonna go fast eight thirty.